Moderator's motions. The moderator's motions are listed in your handbook on page four. They are the same standard motions we approve each town meeting, so I'll address, ask to address them as a group. Do I have a motion to approve moderator motions one, two, three, and four as printed in the handbook? All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, and opposed. That passes unanimously. Onto our business for the night. Article one, free cash transfer sponsored by the town manager and finance director. To see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash an amount of funds to be placed in the stabilization fund, OPEB trust fund, special education, special purpose stabilization account, capital account under a general fund, or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The finance committee recommends the town transfer $1,743,680 from free cash to the following accounts: sum of $25,000 to the general stabilization fund; sum of $5,515,594.40 to the OPEB trust fund; sum of $200,000 to the sped stabilization fund; the sum of $71,364 to account 01544-52450 for the purposes of supporting activities outlined within the opioid settlement program; and the sum of $931,689.60 to the capital account. Mr. Herbert.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can everybody hear me? Hope they can now. Anyway, thank you for being here. Thanks for coming. Hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving holiday. But Article one is indeed our free cash transfer. It's something that we do every year in the fall. And essentially what we do is we appropriate the balance in our accounts from the previous fiscal year. And what the select board, finance committee, and the school committee, as well as the town manager and superintendent agreed to back in 2013 was a set of financial policies which would address long-term liabilities as well as one-time expenses. And that includes moving money into our general stabilization fund, which keeps our, that's considered our rainy day fund, that keeps the balance at 10% of our expenses; our OPEB trust fund, which handles long-term health insurance liabilities for retirees; a sped stabilization fund, which is, which was established, I should say, to handle out-of-district special education costs; and then capital expenses, in the total of almost $1 million. It's how we fund partially our capital plan. And then this year is a little bit different. We have opioid settlement funds. The reason this is in here this year is that we received settlement money from a couple of major lawsuits related to the manufacture of opioids. And typically, this goes into a special account, but the Massachusetts Department of Revenue would not allow cities and towns to put that in a special account right now, so it closed out to free cash.
Thank you. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town vote to transfer from free cash to the sum of $25,000 to the general stabilization fund; sum of $515,594.40 to the OPEB trust fund; sum of $200,000 to the sped stabilization fund; excuse me, the sum of $71,364.40 to account 01544-52450; and the sum of $931,689.60 to the capital account. Do I have such a motion? Discussion.
Preston Crowe, 41 Rockwood. I'm just, want to know why the total at the bottom of the chart is different from the total in the motion, and which number is correct?
Because there was a 40 cent error in the table. The motion is correct.
Okay.
And you get the bonus prize for noticing.
Janet Platt, 11 Rodman Road. I'm just wondering about the capital funds, how, it's nearly $1 million, and we don't have a capital funding committee anymore, and I'm wondering what it's going to and how do we plan for that for the future?
Okay. How we plan for it for the future is probably best left to a meeting other than town meeting. But what it's for, there is no specific appropriation. I'm sure the town manager will be happy to give you a general idea that's up on the screen, but we vote in appropriation, not specific amounts.
Does that answer your question?
I mean, except for the one that I didn't have answered yet.
Are you okay with that? Do you have? No, I'm more than happy to have Michael speak to it a bit, just a general idea of the, of the idea behind it. Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this will require a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, and opposed. That passes unanimously. Article two, property tax exemption sponsored by the Board of Assessors, Select Board, and Town Manager. See if the town will vote to adjust the exemption amount and eligibility factors for the property tax exemption for senior citizens under Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41(c)(1/2) to be effective for exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The finance committee recommends the town adjust the exemption amount and eligibility factors for the property tax exemption for senior citizens under Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Checkson 5, Clause 41(c)(1/2) to 12% to be effective for exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023. Mr. Mignani.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can everybody hear me? I'll use my outside voice if I have to. This is a standard line item that we have just about every fall with respect to this and specific issue. And it's to help those who are having difficulties with paying their taxes, especially seniors and, and those that meet the qualifications online. There's an online qualification list of things that they have to meet before they can apply for these, for these, for this exemption. And this year, it's 12%. Last year, that figure was about $854 taken out their tax bill. This year, roughly, I believe, Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong, roughly about $950 roughly per se.
$970.
$970, okay. So, I know it's not, I'd like to see it be more, but for right now, that's the best we can do, and that's, that's basically it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town vote to adjust the exemption amount and eligibility factors for the property tax exemption for senior citizens under Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41(c)(1/2) to 12% to be effective for exemption granted for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023. Do I have such a motion? Discussion. Seeing none, move to a vote. This requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, and opposed. That passes unanimously. Article three, senior tax work-off program sponsored by the town manager and senior senate director. See if the town will affirm or accept in the, of General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5K to allow for the select board to establish a senior tax work-off program, and further that the town adjust the exemption and, one, allow an approved representative for persons physically unable to provide such services to the town; and, two, allow the maximum reduction of real property tax to be based on 125 volunteer hours in a given tax year rather than $1,500. The finance committee recommends the town so vote. Ms. Greaves.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Anyway, so this is a program that we've had before, but the state has made some recommendations for changes that we would like to accept. The one is that instead of the person who is getting the tax write-off has to do the work, that someone can do it for them, pretty much as it says right there. And then the other one is that instead of an amount, it's the number of hours, and we do support this because as we, you know, for some people, they can't do the, the work physically, but they do need to benefit from the credit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Greaves. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town affirms acceptance, acceptance of General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5K for the select board to adjust, establish a senior work-off program, and further that the town adjust the exemption and, one, allow an approved representative for persons physically unable to provide such services to the town; and, two, allowing the maximum reduction of real property tax to be based on 125 volunteer service hours in a given tax year rather than $1,500. Do I have such a motion? Discussion.
Ryan Turcliff, 20 on Rossy Lane. Just a quick question that I probably missed. What's the monetary value of one service hour?
Mr. Herbert.
So typically, it's been $15 an hour, but this also gives us the ability to make adjustments to that if necessary. And I believe the, you know, as Ms. Greaves had mentioned, we, this is kind of a revision of a current program, and I think last year, that amount totaled 22, $2,250.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Mr. DeSoni.
Thank you. You didn't mark DeSoni who I thought rode, yes, in Mass. I did watch the pre-timing forum. It's the same question I had on that night. If a person is working, not working, and has social security disability with fixed incomes, what does this do to this article?
Was it due to what, Mark?
To the article, it's how the motion.
Oh, the article. Sorry. Mr. Herbert.
Yeah, I would actually defer to our assistant town manager for this.
Ms. Ball.
I don't know. Can you hear me? So we looked into this after the town, the town manager's forum, and I don't, there is no eligibility requirements like the exemption has, and so if somebody is able to work off their hours, they're eligible.
That includes volunteer and the fixed income, doesn't it get affected?
It go, it goes directly towards your property taxes.
Unless they're issuing the 1099 or a W-2, there would be no social security impact.
It's not, it does not, yeah, it goes directly against your property tax.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, this will require a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, and opposed. That passes unanimously. Article four, accept donation of land, Zero Fountain Street, sponsored by the town manager. See if the town will vote to accept as a gift, take, or otherwise acquire a parcel of land identified on the assessor's map 010 and lot 0045, including approximately 10,890 square feet, more or less, with an address of Zero Fountain Street rear, and authorize the select board to take any other action or execute any documents necessary to effectuate the conveyance of same to the town or take any action relative thereto. The finance committee recommends the town so vote. Mr. Herbert.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So this is a small piece of property in basically the middle of a subdivision off of Fountain Street that's being generously donated to the town by the Bell family. Again, it's, it's a very small piece of property. It's unbuildable, and currently, it's forested open space where it will, and if it does come to the town, if the town meeting so votes, it will remain as open space. And our conservation agent and our assistant conservation agent have identified this parcel as having a high ecological value for the town and has benefits in terms of carbon sequestration, so that's why we had asked town meeting to support it.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town accept as a gift, take, or otherwise acquire a parcel of land identified on the assessor's map 010 and lot 0045, including approximately 10,890 square feet, more or less, with an address of Zero Fountain Street rear, and to authorize the select board to take any other action or execute any documents necessary to effectuate the conveyance of same to the town. Do I have such a motion? Discussion. Relating to land acquisition, this will require a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, and opposed. That passes unanimously. Article five, accept easement, 107 High Streets, sponsored by the select board and DPW. See if the town will vote to accept as a gift, purchase, or otherwise acquire an easement as shown on a plan entitled "Easement Exhibit Plan 107, High Street, Ashland, Mass., prepared by GCG Associates, Inc., and dated 9/28/23," and indicated as 15-foot access easement, a copy of which is on file in the office of the town clerk. And further, the town shall appropriate funds sufficient to acquire same or take any action relative thereto. The finance committee recommends the town so vote. Ms. Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is a easement up on High Street. If you're familiar with the old, yesteryear farm up there, that woman, Mrs. Crawford, many years ago donated a piece of property out in back of her home. It's about 3.28 acres, and with the stipulation that the town mow it twice a year. The town does not have access to that land to, to mow without having, had to disrupt some very old stone wall, so that some neighboring homeowners have offered, or negotiated with the town for an easement so that we can access the property for mowing twice a year. So we would like to support this so we can continue to have this as free space. You can actually see it if you drive up High Street and look to your right, not too far after Whittmore, you can see the, the open space back there, and, and looks like a nice field. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town accept as a gift, purchase, or otherwise acquire an easement as shown on the plan entitled "Easement Exhibit Plan 107, High Street, Ashland, Mass., prepared by GCG Associates, Inc., and dated 9/8/2023," and indicated as 15-foot access easement, a copy of which is on file on the office of the town clerk. And if the easement is not provided as a gift, that the town appropriate or transfer $2,000 from account one, account 01422-52450 in order to pay the cost of same. Please note, the account reference was not in your handbook. It was added later. It was unintentionally omitted. Do I have such a motion? Discussion.
I'm gonna let my neighbors go first. You go first.
Thanks, all. I'm here to speak against the proposed.
Your name and address.
Sure, Ben Crete, 111 High Street.
Thank you.
Here to speak against the proposed easement for 107 High Street, I'm gonna butter at 111 High Street. In the town manager's forum this week, Mr. Herbert alleged the need for this easement was because a new property owner had expressed opposition to the town using his property to fulfill its obligation to mow the field located off of High Street. Believe he's referring to me, and I want to be clear that I have never expressed any opposition or anything but cooperation in allowing the town to access the field via my property. In fact, when the DPW cleared some dogwood trees from my neighbor's property in preparation for taking this easement last year, I asked why they were doing so, and was told that because the select board had expressed concern in the town accessing this, access in this field via private property, and that a future homeowner might possibly deny them access. Do not feel either argument is valid, and given High Street's status as a scenic road, I am against this easement and the removal of the scenic stone wall it would entail. As this town changes and modernizes, I believe it is important to respect and preserve artifacts of our agricultural and industrial heritage and maintain the rural feel that attracted so many of us to buy homes and build lives here. This unnecessary undertaking undermines those cultural touchstones, and therefore, I am opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Hang on, sorry. Mr. Herbert, did you have a?
No, I can wait.
Okay.
Okay. Amy Syed, 106 High Street. I have two questions, the first one being that is presented in the, I apologize, what's that called, the, the plan. Claudia, you very specifically mentioned to, this was being done to not disturb stone walls, and I believe there is a stone wall exactly right there.
Mr. Herbert, this is an existing driveway?
Um, so you're talking, I'm looking at right there. So you, this is not to the left, this is her, the current owner's driveway?
Correct.
Okay, all right, so I apologize for that. So then I guess my second question is that what's gonna be, if, if the town is taking that easement, what type of ensuring that people are not going through in that road to get to that parcel of land?
Understand that an easement just means that you can walk across it, doesn't mean you're gonna develop it. It just means you can have access.
But, but understand that this is a scenic road. It's a very, that, that curve that's right there is a very tight curve. There's a lot of accidents, and the ground outside of, I'm directly across the street from that entrance, is extremely soggy, and any car that parks there sinks into the mud.
Okay, and again, I'm not here to dispute any of what you're saying. I'm just looking to explain an easement doesn't mean anything's built. It just means the town has legal access to transgress that, that area, to get from one place to another.
I, I know, but it's being presented tonight as being that, oh, this is great, we can now access this, this parcel of land without any hindrance, because there now is a direct access, and I'm questioning the, what is going to happen to ensure that people are not going onto that parcel at all hours of the day? Because right now, there is no access, so now suddenly, there will be access. That's my question. So, thank you.
So just to be clear, I mean, obviously, there's a, a bit of confusion here, but I believe this is an existing driveway.
It is. It's a private home, though, so now you're saying the town is going to have that access.
Well, we will have access for mowing purposes only.
Okay. Okay, so then.
We're, we're already doing that, Amy.
I, I do, I understand that, but it was just presented as being that this is open space, and that you're saying, okay, this is great, now the town can access it, and so can private citizens.
No, no, it doesn't, it's access for the town of Ashland.
Okay, that's just not how it was presented. So, again, I, there's been a lot of, just discuss, like, the way that this has been presented has been just very confusing, and quite frankly, against, I, I'm sure if Mavis was still alive today, she'd be thrown the fact that we're having so much discussion over her request to mow this lawn twice a year. So, thank you very much.
Hi, ma'am.
Katie Crete, I live at 111 High Street. I just wanted to share with you my concerns about the communication around this easement being put in. I came out one day to find DPW putting stakes in the grass and cutting down a blooming tree, saying they were gonna take down the stone wall and put in a gate and make an access that way, and that was the last that we heard of it. And so to find out now, it's actually not that the tree was cut down for no reason, it's going to be through the neighbor's driveway. That's new information to all of us. And also, as my husband said, I think we're being misrepresented. We did not tell anyone that they could not come through our yard. In fact, unannounced, a tractor showed up. Four-year-old twin boys, when they see a tractor, they're all that excited, they think it's like time to go see the tractor, and we said, we just need to be informed, a heads-up, just let us know, and that was not what we received. So I think that's why we all have some concerns, also with the location of where this easement is, when they're coming in and out. We just recently had an accident of someone coming across our lawn right there. It's a very bad corner, very poor visibility. So just wanted to share my concerns here about that.
Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Manager?
So Katie, I'm, I'm starting to understand a little bit where some of the confusion is. So, yes, about a year ago, DPW looked at creating a new easement rather than the existing one that, that existed, that would go through a stone wall, and you would have to clear brush and everything. They decided not to do that and go with the existing driveway access that is, that's currently being used. We just needed to get an easement, specifically an easement for it. And so I was not referring to, to the Crete family when I was talking about people who didn't want us to use it anymore, so.
Okay.
So this, this house is actually 107 High Street.
Yep.
Does that, does that clear things up a little bit?
Yeah, I mean, it's new news, you know, because when they came through and they cut the tree down, it was like, we're doing this, and now to cut down a tree for absolutely no reason, when they're not even going there, it's.
And they cut this tree recently?
It created this little animosity, and a lot of people very confused why it was happening that way.
This tree was cut recently?
No, when they put the stakes in a year ago, and then we never heard anything about it, so. All right. Okay.
And I do want to, I'm sure, I mean, I'll apologize on behalf of the town for, for the lack of communication, which doesn't, sounds like it could have been handled better in a, in a couple of instances. I do just want to note for folks in the audience that the reason you get, whether this situation or another, the reason you, you acquire an easement when you're already doing something is to preserve the legal right to do it in the future when there are different property owners or, or different neighbors. So that's, it's a standard practice, and has nothing to do, and I believe in this case as well, with the current folks there, it's just a matter of preserving the town's legal right to go mow a lawn twice a year, that without an easement, has to rely on the individuals who may be there now in 10 years, in 20 years, in 100 years. Acquire it. And opposed.
Looking for your support in requesting additional liquor licenses. You probably are wondering why we are requesting additional liquor license if we still have licenses available. The answer is simple. The process is along. It could take up to two years for us to receive those licenses. These additional licenses could be used for restaurants, hotels, clubs, taverns, continuing care retirement facilities, or general on-premise. This slide shows the location of all currently issued liquor licenses. The green shows locations where we have both a retail and a restaurant establishment. An example would be Mexico City or Las Cabos. The blue is retail stores only, and the red is restaurants. So why are we asking for 16 more licenses if we still have licenses? We recognize that having licenses readily available is a tool that can help us attract businesses, but understand that we need to issue them in a responsible manner. Attracting businesses and is benefiting from the meals tax is good for Ashland. So how did we arrive at 16? We looked at the potential needs and the current projects. These include the development of downtown, 10 to 60 Main Street, Pleasant Street, the MBTA train station, 9 to 49 Homer Ave, the tech center located at 200 Homer Ave, 100 Chestnut Street, and the redevelopment of Route 126. Currently, we are awaiting the application for 200 Homer Ave and the brewery application for the downtown fire station. In closing, supporting the home rule petition is an investment in the community. This helps us shape our community and attract new businesses. Communities like Hudson, Marlboro, and Natick have revitalized their communities following the same process. Adding additional licenses will play a key role in revitalizing and redeveloping Ashland. We will be adding dining options that'll draw, draw people from other communities, and we will benefit from the additional meals tax it generates. Let's hope that Ashland becomes a destination that other communities strive to be.
Thank you, Ms. Robey. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town authorize the select board to file a home rule petition to increase the number of alcohol license for on-premises consumption for the town of Ashland by 16 additional license for alcohol. And further, upon submission, the select board is hereby authorized to approve amendments to said petitions, petition which are within the scope of this article. Do I have such a motion? Discussion. Ms. Kinsman wanted to make a statement on behalf of the select board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Our community has invested a lot in our infrastructure, specifically in our downtown and Route 126. The select board looked at the potential private investment in businesses that could come into Ashland as a result of this over the next five to 10 years. We are already seeing that commercial investment beginning. Ashland is a desirable community. The select board felt strongly that it was important to our town's economic development that if a restaurant wanted to come into Ashland, that we should have the ability to offer a liquor license if they wanted, rather than risk losing them to another town if there were no more licenses to give, especially since we hear from residents how important it is to attract new businesses to Ashland. As the town's licensing authority, the select board takes its role in determining liquor licenses very seriously. Each applicant must come before the board for a hearing and follow a strict process before a liquor license can potentially be given. Because of the lengthy time and legislative process around a home rule petition, it will not be possible to come back to town meeting to request more at a later time. So although there may never be a need to actually issue 16 additional liquor licenses... licenses, the Select Board supports this warrant article, and asks town meeting to vote in favor of the home rule petition. Thank you.
Mr. DeSoni?
Okay, thank you, Mark DeSoni again. Against it for, for the reasons why we could do better business fraction than just liquor licenses. Against it because it does not show what true Ashland can be. Sixteen liquor licenses, it has to come back in a couple of years, and make sure it's there, it's not the right way of doing things, in my mind. Economically, it does not help, because it only targets one product. Why is this a thing to do now, when there's no business to be in town for? It's the blind, lean the blind, and hoping the blind don't get drunk before they can see you again.
Thank you. Mr. Turncliff?
Hey, Ryan Turncliff, you're gonna get the better half of us in a second here, so, I'll just get my two bits in.
So is this gonna be dueling Turncliffs?
No, no, we're not, we're on the same side.
Okay.
Wouldn't everyone like to see that, though?
Yeah, so, so look, my comment here is, if we have open and available liquor licenses, this is premature, and it's the, the Board of, the Select Board's responsibility to issue these licenses appropriately and fairly, and competitively. I, I would argue that you can have a competitive process for these licenses, and find the best business to bring into Ashland that deserves and needs a liquor license for that business to exist. Recent news in Framingham, last year, huge battle over a single liquor license that became available because of business turnover, and that's going to happen in Ashland, too. I would love for every business that opens that needs a liquor license to be successful, the reality is they're not. So have you really accounted for business turnover in the request for these liquor licenses, and do we really need, when it would be at least forty-six, she's gonna have the right number, of liquor licenses in this town? So, I guess that's my piece. If, if they are issued, I would just urge extreme caution and judicious use of those licenses to those businesses. Thank you.
Ms. Turncliff?
Amy Turncliff, 21 Rossi Lane, and I absolutely understand the intent, and the good intent of this article, but I think a conversation would be remiss without the public health perspective. And so, it's my understanding, I just wanna make sure I have the numbers right, it's my understanding, we have twenty licenses, sixteen have been issued, four are available. Our total liquor licenses with the additional sixteen would be about fifty, I think.
Stop it right there, are those numbers correct, Mr. Herbert? Before we get on, and further, let's validate that.
So, yeah, I have, the latest numbers I have are for being available for all alcohol and to wine and wine.
And then fifty total, which would be on-premise and off-premise, with the sixteen.
Forty-one. Oh, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, that is correct, that is correct.
Okay, so I think that puts us from the ABCC map, and I'm not sure this map is up to date, but I think that would put us into the category listed by the ABCC, that would be with, with towns like Natick, Milford, Franklin, that all have populations of about thirty thousand. I know that the intent of the mass law is one per one thousand population, and if we get the additional sixteen, we're looking at about one per four fifty residents, and so I just think it's important that we have, from a public health perspective, a conversation about the public health implications of expanding alcohol access, and availability, and potentially signage for young people, and would ask that there be a public health impact assessment of what, you know, increasing those, essentially doubling those licenses would, would lead to. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Crowe?
Preston Crowe, 41 Rockwood. I personally don't drink, so, you know, my initial reaction is, well, this doesn't impact me, but then, on the other hand, I can very quickly name seven restaurants in Ashland that I like to go to, that all have a liquor license, and my understanding of the restaurant business is that without the liquor license, most of those restaurants wouldn't be making it, and wouldn't be around anymore. So, even though I'm not consuming alcohol myself, having a good variety of restaurants is to my benefit, and to the town's benefit, and if we want to have more restaurants in town, besides, you know, fast food places, they need liquor licenses, or they won't make it, or, you know, they'll choose to go some other town, so I'm in favor of this.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Yep, Amy Syed, 106 High Street. I just have questions around-
You can pull that microphone down.
To, to the, the little girl level, so-
No, to the not giant level.
So my quick question is around town resources. I have to imagine that adding sixteen liquor licenses would be an increase into town resources, such as Board of Health for inspection services, and also civil, from a perspective of if we're gonna have that many more drivers that have just been drinking and that are now driving. I'm just curious about what thoughts have been given into the consequences and the additional resources that our town would need to support such a large increase in liquor licenses. Thank you.
Mr. Herbert?
So I would say, probably the majority of the resource-intensive part of this would actually be on the administrative end, and Susan, since you are the administrative end on liquor licenses, do you feel confident that you can handle this?
I do, and I feel that we're not gonna get sixteen all at once, we're gonna get one here, two there, until they're all dispensed, so I don't think that we're asking to operate, I mean, to run hearings for sixteen licenses all at once.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote, this will require a simple majority. All those in favor of Article six, please raise your cards. Thank you, and opposed. Article six passes. Article seven, CPA funding to construct a dog park, sponsored by the Community Preservation Committee. See if the town will vote to appropriate up to $215,000 to enable the creation of the Ashland Dog Park on town property along Memorial Drive, or pass any vote or take any action relative, any action thereon. The Community Preservation Committee recommends the town so vote. The Finance Committee recommends the town so vote, subject to the presentation, presentation of a maintenance plan acceptable to the town, and to report on revenue generating opportunities to pay for said maintenance. Ms. Terrell?
Can we have a little slide presentation?
You can see it, but we can't.
There we go. Okay. Hi, my name is Cara Terrell, 3 Hilldale Place, Ashland, and I'm the President of the Ashland Dog Park Committee. Next slide. So with over eighteen hundred-plus registered dogs, Ashland's culture embodies the need for designated open space and recreation community dog park. The designation of an area for dogs to roam off-leash legally will further preserve the currently-used areas, Town Forest, Ashland State Park, Warren Woods, and Warren Center, from dog use. Time and time again, the voters in this community have told us they want an Ashland Dog Park. Next slide. The Ashland Dog Park Committee, a board of six members, has been working on the project of developing an active recreation dog park for over eight years. Next slide. We became a 501(c)(3), so we could act as a nonprofit and fundraise. We are expected to complete the dog park project by spring of, sorry, to start the project by spring of twenty, no, we're going to complete it by spring of 2025. Fingers crossed. So we can be, so we can be sure we don't lose our grant funding. The committee is now in receipt, sorry, slide. The committee is now in receipt of a design created by a design architect, who has worked closely with Stanton Grant at past dog parks. Our next step to be eligible, eligible for a construction grant is to find a designer to create a final design, obtain permits from the Conservation Committee, agree upon a finalized maintenance plan for ongoing maintenance, then we will go out to bid. The grant says we need to be ready for constructed, construction by spring of 2025, to still be eligible for the construction grant through Stanton, Stanton Grant, where we are getting most of the funding. Next. And this is the design that we have currently. And this is on Memorial Drive, take a ride at the Dunkin' Donuts. Okay, next. That's it.
There is no next.
That was it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town appropriate up to $215,000 to enable the creation of the Ashland Dog Park on town property along Memorial Drive, that will include parking, storage facilities, fencing, and off-leash exercise space for dogs, and that to meet this appropriation, the sum of up to $215,000, be transferred from the open space account from the Community Preservation Fund balance, and with unexpended funds as of June 30th, 2027, being returned to their funding source. Do I have such a motion? Discussion, sir?
Aaron Ladd, 153 Pleasant Street, Chair of the CPC Committee. We enthusiastically support this application, we've seen it in many other towns across the Commonwealth of dog parks, working with the Stanton Grant as part of the funding mechanism. The land in place is a great location, the design has been tweaked to make sure that we have everything funded for the future, it fits into our open space and recreation plans, I hope they apply for our liquor license so they can do some fun events. Uh-huh. All joking aside, sorry, I need a little humor at town meeting, but I get the applause, so that's all good. I hope you support this, and I will as well for the future. Thanks.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, this will require a simple majority, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, and opposed. That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Now the article you've all been waiting for, no, just kidding. It is the last one. Article eight, extend CPA funds for the Riverwalk Project, sponsored by the Community Preservation Committee. See if the town will vote to extend the time by which funds need to be spent on the Riverwalk Trail Enhancement Project, which was authorized under Article 11, at the 2017 Annual Town Meeting, to complete design and construction of the Sudbury River Trail Riverwalk until December 31st, 2026, at which time, any unexpended funds will be returned to their funding sources, or take any action relative thereto. The Finance, the Community Preservation Committee recommends the town so vote. The Finance Committee recommends the town so vote. Mr. Ladd?
Yeah, so, I'm in school, asking for an extension, but the project is tweaked a little bit, you've seen work continue on the Riverwalk Project, even today as you speak, no, work at Milpon Park is getting constructed there, we've completed the bridge, we've completed the boardwalk. This continuation of extension is to hopefully make connections towards the Cordville Road part of the trail, so we can make a loop connecting with the project, so, need a little bit more time to do engineering work, studies related to the other side of the river, and hopefully we can get that done in the next three years, otherwise, I'll ask for another extension.
Thank you. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town extend the time by which funds need to be spent on the Riverwalk Trail Enhancement Project, which was authorized under Article 11, at the 2017 Annual Town Meeting, to complete the design and construction of the Sudbury River Trail Riverwalk until December 31st, 2026, at which time, any unexpended funds will be returned to their funding sources. Do I have such a motion? Discussion, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote, this requires a simple majority, all those in favor of Article eight, please raise your cards. Thank you, and opposed. That passes unanimously. Being no further business, I'll entertain a motion to dissolve. All in favor? Opposed? Happy holidays, everyone.